All right. I'm here in the med stand, just a tad bit late. I will ask my clerk, Ms. McCoy, to call the rolls.
All right. Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Here.
Mr. Bespich.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
And Mary Lee is late.
Yes. So welcome everybody to our Roanoke City Council informal session for September 7, 2021, our 9:00 a.m. session. It's good to see everybody. This morning's meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, following the two-piece session on Thursday, September 9 at 7:00 p.m., and again on Saturday, September 11 at 4:00 p.m., and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Our first item this morning is a communication from our mayor, Sharon Peely Sr., requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to 2.2-3711 A1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this morning's meeting. I need a motion.
To move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Vice Mayor Whiteboyd. Aye. Mr. Bespich.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. So this morning, our first briefing is going to be introduced by our city manager. Mr. Cowell, are you ready?
Yep. Thank you if you all are ready for that item. So I think everyone knows that for quite some time, as we continue to ensure that everyone that calls Roanoke home is able to access and participate in their government, that we have maintained a variety of translation services within the community. That may be for E-911 calls, it may be for routine business activities, or even include things like sign language interpreters, depending on the circumstances and the situation. More recently, this has included production of materials in languages other than English and outreach directly to Spanish-speaking residents. As the community continues to diversify and as we continue to seek more ways to be even more inclusive, we continue to progress on these efforts. And Katie Hedrick, who you know as our outreach support specialist, who's been working with the Spanish-speaking portion of our community as our efforts with COVID and the response to COVID have continued, is going to share with you some of these most recent efforts that we have underway.
Good morning. So as Mr. Cowell has said, our translation efforts are not necessarily new, but in the last five to six months, we've really tried to increase the awareness of them across the city, and we're also changing a little bit of the way that they're accessed within the city. So the city of Roanoke has a contract with Valasha Language Services, and so there's really, I guess, two pieces to the language access program that we've implemented. So the first piece is that Valasha has an app that is accessible by all Roanoke City employees. So we've really tried to increase communication about that, especially to those organizations within the city that are more public-facing, so public safety, libraries, planning and permitting, all of those kinds of departments. We're really trying to make sure that they and their employees are aware that this app is accessible to them. So that's really part one, and I'm going to demonstrate that for you guys as well. We've purchased four iPads within the city. So this is our little translator robot. He lives in the lobby of the municipal building here. We also have an iPad that's available through emergency services. We have one that the Department of Health currently has, and then I also have one that I take with me to various outreach events. So the app is already downloaded on this, and as you can see, this one also has a speaker. So if there's a larger group or anything like that, it's very accessible to that kind of situation. The second piece of what we're doing is a language, or sorry, a limited English proficient call-in line. So basically, that is a bidirectional translation service. So for the last however many years, different departments within the city are able to contact an interpreter and have them when they have a client that needs assistance or whatever. But it's really difficult for people within the community to call into these offices without having an interpreter present. So just in trying to ensure accessibility, to make sure that we are meeting compliance and all of that kind of thing, we determined that it's also necessary for residents of Roanoke to be able to call in with an interpreter and have that side of the translation available as well. So again, working with Valasha, and the Department of Technology has been on board with this as well. We've implemented these lines. Currently, we have 23 departments that are complete, and then seven additional departments that are still in process of being implemented. But each department that has decided that this is a necessary piece for them will have a non-853 number, so a dedicated phone number that will publicize in the community. And for example, if they're trying to call the Department of Social Services, they call this specific number, and they're immediately put in touch with Valasha, who will then determine what language they speak and provide them with an interpreter. And then that interpreter will call in with the limited English proficient person to DSS or whatever department they're trying to reach, and they'll have a translator with them so they can talk through the services that they need or the appointment they're trying to schedule or whatever the case may be. The second piece of that is that when you call city departments, and if any of you have called them recently, you may have noticed, the message now says, "Press 1 for English or 2 for all other languages." So when a person presses 2, the same process happens. They're connected with Valasha, Valasha determines what language they speak, they're connected with an interpreter, and then they call back to the appropriate department and they talk through whatever services it is that they need. So if, I would imagine most of you are familiar with Valasha, the city of Roanoke has worked with them in the past, but it's a language network that's actually based here in Roanoke. They work with, I wrote it down and now I can't find it, they have 18,000 linguists basically on demand. So they have over 286 accessible languages, and for the most part, these interpreters are available within 30 seconds. Every now and then, if it's a very obscure language, it may take a little bit longer, but it's very, very quick, which in Roanoke, we are very diverse and are becoming ever more diverse. So the ability to have various languages on demand is very important for us, which is one reason that we've gone specifically with Valasha, just because of the accessibility to all of these various languages. So this is the way the app works, and it also, the Valasha website looks identical to the app. So we've told departments, if you have some kind of mobile device, especially public safety and people like that that may have a cell phone or a tablet or something, they have this in their pocket all the time, but it also looks exactly the same as on the website. I don't know how well you guys can see this, but...
Not at all. My glasses off.
When you open the app, it immediately opens the top requested languages in Roanoke. So you may or may not be able to see, so I don't want you to, but Spanish, Que Lí, Dari, Haitian Creole, Arabic, those are our top five requested languages within the city of Roanoke. But it lists all languages. If you need to pick a different one, you can search by it. There's also an option for American Sign Language. So when you open the app, you select the language, and you have the option to use just a phone call or a video call. The only exception is American Sign Language, because if you just did an audio call, that kind of speaks the part of it. So the American Sign Language is only a video call option. But for example, if we wanted a Spanish interpreter, I could call, and we're actually going to do a live demonstration so that you guys can see how this works. So for example, we would choose Spanish, and we would do a video call, and then there's information that you put in, mostly just to keep track. Different departments may need to know, sorry, now it's telling me that I need to choose the facility. Different departments can track different information just for keeping purposes, and for some reason, it's not working. Is it making a Wi-Fi? It is on Wi-Fi, but it's telling me I need to connect or choose a facility, which it's not letting me choose. So let's see if it will give me the correct... Well, this is... Let me just close it and see. I had it all ready to go, too. I was so prepared. Okay, now it has a facility. So for example, when I click Spanish, I can choose audio or video. So if I do a video call...
Katie, well, just running, if a person is not, if a person is illiterate, how could they go around using this equipment?
Most of the time, whoever they're interacting with could determine, okay, they need an interpreter, and they select whatever they need to select. And Valasha also has algorithms that they use to determine what the language is that the person speaks. So if they come in and we can just tell they're not proficient in English, we could get in touch with Valasha and they could walk through the steps that they need to, to figure out what language they speak, who they're trying to contact, all of those kinds of things.
Would it be available, like to have a phone line attached to that so they just...
Yes, and so that's part of what the other piece of the process. We have the app available, but there also will be the phone numbers. They can even just call the general city number and click 2 for other languages, and then they can talk to whoever, the interpreter and the people at Valasha and all of that. This is a great demonstration of how quickly this works.
That's always how it works, right? I was very excited that that was in, it was taking place. I called Ms. McCoy, I said, "Do you know that cities is, has the ability to, you know, somebody pulls in, have another line?"
Right. And we also, I'll just keep explaining while we're waiting for this interpreter to pick up. Valasha also provides document translation, so that's another piece, especially as we're having important communication about COVID or schools opening or any of those kinds of things. Document translation is available through Valasha as well. All of that is on the website. You can just select, "I want an in-person interpreter," you can schedule a meeting in advance if you know you're going to need someone to be there, you can submit documents through them. All of that is happening. So we've gotten in touch with all the departments, we've provided a training to Department of Social Services, and then we're also offering it to other departments if they feel like it's something that would benefit them to know specifically how to work the app or what to click on in the Valasha website, all of those pieces.
Well, what's the average wait time for an interpretation?
Usually 30 seconds or less. I don't know if this is...
Do you have multiple, like in the same language, multiple Spanish speakers or multiple...
Yes.
So you have, so that if you have one tied up, you don't have to wait for him to finish?
Right. And so Valasha is based in Roanoke, but they contract with linguists all over the country.
Oh, okay.
So they have, I think, like 18,000, they said there can be some in California or Texas or wherever, they just all work through Valasha. So I don't know if this is a Wi-Fi issue, because we used it Friday, we had a vaccine clinic, and there was someone that was hard of hearing, so we contacted an ASL interpreter, and it was maybe 10 seconds before...
I was thinking it might have something to do with it.
They were logged on.
Does anybody else have any questions while we're waiting?
I don't know what's going on.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask you, is this the business that was in the Ramp program for a while? This is the same one that was over there in Ramp?
They're physically housed in CoLab. They're based on it.
What's that?
They're physically housed in CoLab, so that's where their offices are based, is in CoLab, and yes, they were in, I think, two cohorts ago in the Ramp program as well.
Right. So that, I guess a point I really wanted to make is that seems like this is a success story for Ramp as well, that, you know, that this business has grown to the point where they have access to 18,000.
Yes.
I mean, that's a pretty good number, and I think it just helps to show that the investment we made in Ramp was well worth it.
Yep.
I should say...
That's how live demonstrations work, right, Katie?
Right, yeah.
We will show you at another time how this actually works, so...
Does anybody else have any questions while, for Katie, while we're waiting?
She can take questions now, I'm sure she's happy to do that, or...
I don't have a question, I just want to say...
I am so happy that you are working in our community, and all I hear is positive things, so keep up the good work.
Is that in your presentation?
I just had a logistical question. I called in last week, actually to the clerk's office, and got the message, and at the time I pressed English, or pressed 1, and it just took me back to the main menu again. So there may have been...
I think there were problems, because I did...
There may have been some...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Same thing happened to me, and I called them from the city manager's office to try to get the clerk's office, so it was...
Yeah, that issue was on our side, because it was actually just kind of getting you in this loop, so it was never making the connection. I think you needed another language, so, but that has been correct.
Well, thank you. I think this is fantastic and very much needed, and just it ups our accessibility in terms of language exponentially, so thank you.
Yeah, maybe what we can do is when we're over here for the kickoff or welcoming week on Friday...
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Maybe we have it up here on Friday and actually show you how it works, and we'll work through whatever the...
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Great minds think alike. I was thinking the same thing. It would be very appropriate doing our welcoming kickoff.
Sure.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are a tad bit ahead of schedule for our legislative committee meeting, and...
Well, my vice chair, neither Dr. Eli Jameson or Lethery Smith are available today, they're both otherwise occupied, so they informed me that Mark Cathy would be representing them on the legislative committee, so I think we probably should...
We have to wait for him.
Since that was announced for 10 o'clock, we...
Well, 9:30, I think.
9:30.
Oh, 9:30?
Yes, 9:30. We're just a little bit early, we'll wait.
All right, so we can take about a 15-minute break and come back at 9:30?
A little recess here for about 14 minutes.
14 minutes, okay.
I met with, uh, Klein, one-on-one.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Did you make any progress?
Yeah, yeah.
At least it seemed like it.
We'll see.
But I mentioned to you that even in the long good attitude, time to time we would meet with. We didn't necessarily, we don't think that we tried to search for things that we can agree on. It's just like right now.
That's great.
He's got the budget for that, I'm sure.
I think it's mostly me and you.
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 People found a lot of trouble, really, too, though. We didn't cover it, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I did want to tell you this, though. You might have missed that.
Oh, no, don't you talk about it.
I just want to remind you, did you see that news about him?
Yeah, I saw it. I was sitting right here, bud.
Oh, man.
We were writing that game, so it's more important.
Yeah, up in the business.
Let's say that from the last time, last time we took care of.
Is it eight child or eight children?
I'm gonna get to where I know I can get to, and nobody else, but I know the difference. I know the difference. Because when I was there, it was eight child.
There's a lot to go down there, man.
Ten women, ten men.
Come out of one of them. They come out the cafeteria, and they beat one, and then they're into the class.
That's where he is, my friend.
We didn't realize.
Hey, Mark.
Good morning.
Council is back in session, and good morning to everybody, uh, that I have not spoken yet. And it's good to see you here, Ms. Kathy. Thank you for coming in and representing our school board. Uh, so our meeting was standing in recess. Uh, we'll continue to be in recess, well, I said reconvene, but we'll, we'll now, uh, turn this session. We'll go into our legislative session, and I'm pleased to recognize, uh, Councilman Bill Bestbitch, who is our chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank all of you for being with us this morning. I appreciate especially Mr. Kathy filling in since, uh, Dr. Jamison and Ms. Smith are not able to be with us today. But I'll ask Ms. Crook to please call the meeting to order officially, and ask Ms. Crook to please call the roll.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think that the, uh, process for this meeting, uh, can be that we just, we kind of go through our policies, and then the legislative priorities that have been drafted. I have some, some, uh, additional information to share with you based on conversations I've had over the last week or so. And, uh, then there's a few items to consider for possible addition to the priorities list. So let me start by asking if anyone, uh, has any suggestions for any modifications to our policies other than the education policy. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at this. Not, not seen any, uh, Mr. Cal, I'm wondering if under the technology and infrastructure policy statement, if we want to make some reference to the state funding from ARPA that they have not yet appropriated. And actually, I think it would be a good idea at this point if you could ask the, the relevant city departments to look at all of these and just see if there's additional things, or if there's revisions that they would recommend, you know, environmental policy, economic development policy, and so forth. So if you could get them to look at that over the next, uh, month or so, and let us know if they think that we need to...
We'll be happy to do that, thank you.
...amend any of those, that would be great. And of course, as usual, we have, uh, the endorsement for 2022 of the VML legislative program. And then the, uh, school board has worked on some, uh, new language for the education policy, which can, can replace what we have in there now. Uh, Mr. Kathy, did you want to make any comment about that at this point, or?
Uh, sir, I just wanted to point out that this is a, I was real proud of my, my colleagues for developing this, this plan. Um, you see the very first paragraph, we talked about tutoring and remedial stuff, and COVID pandemic plans to help kids with learning gaps, you know, who missed out last year. You saw statewide, we had test, you know, test scores drop, uh, because people weren't in school. And that's the most direct thing and the fastest thing we have to work on. Uh, in addition to that, our other, and so that's our policy, which is kind of an urgent policy this year. And after that, we listed our legislative priorities, um, and talked about wellness services for everybody. Uh, we're worried about capital expenditures and air circulation in our buildings, and doing everything we can, uh, as everybody is, uh, to make sure that we've got safe environments, uh, in a, in a COVID, post-COVID world. Um, I was real enthusiastic to see the college debt forgiveness for teachers. I think that's a wonderful idea. There is a similar program for public interest lawyers or public offenders, that after a certain amount of time in the field, their loans are forgiven because graduate school is so expensive. So I love that idea, and I really hope that that would be an incentive for people to teach when they know they can have, uh, debt forgiveness.
Right.
So love that, uh, as a priority, and I think it's important to keep bringing good teachers in. Um, other learning recovery technic, uh, other learning recovery incidents are there. Uh, ensuring funding equity is a big, you know, is a big part of our, our, our new superintendent's goals. And all of those are excellent ideas, those bullet points that I won't read to you. And then, uh, you know, we're just trying to do right by our students, but, uh, real proud of this legislative plan. Um, I know that we'll work with, uh, Delegate Prusul and Senator Edwards and everybody else who'll work with us to make this happen, but, um, we are pleased to present this to you, and, uh, we, we hope that it meets your approval.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kathy. And let me ask you, there's a couple of terms that I was not familiar with down at the very end here. Support current efforts at the VDOE to define SLIFE and explore necessary changes to the SOA. I know about SOL and SOQ, but I wasn't familiar with SOA.
S-LIFE is students with limited or interrupted formal education. Um, and it is a, needs of students, in fact, I think a lot of times it's an immigrant situation or other situations in which, for some reason or another, you've been unable to, to come in. And SOA is standards of accreditation. Uh, when we bring those children in, um, sometimes it really, it hits us negatively in, say, graduation stats. Uh, we, you know, we have a bunch of lovely children coming from Nepal or another nation, uh, you know, who have, take a lot of, their math is unbelievable, but their English, it's hard to get, to get them the needed skills in their 10th grade, and we shouldn't take a hit for our successful education to them and have our graduation rate or other things decline. And that's just one example, there's many other metrics when you can find that, but that's, that's the generalized problem that's discussed.
So, uh, I think maybe it'd be good if we can just go ahead and put that in here.
Allow, allow us to make that clearer, so you don't have to be an acronym specialist.
Yeah.
Uh, and we will, we'll get you some better language on that that makes it clear, and then anybody can read and understand the first time they see it, which I think is very important.
Well, and I think, you know, in, in the policy, you have standards of quality parentheses, SOQ, uh, standards of learning, SOL, so I think we just need to spell out what those are, that'd be great.
I think you were exactly right, we will do it.
Any other comments or questions, uh, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
I just want to clarify something, um, when it comes to the students that are immigrant...
I'm sorry, I have to up here.
With respect to the, uh, the students that have been here less than a year, um, students that come from, um, whether it's Latin America or Africa, wherever they come from, a lot of the students don't have the proper education. Maybe they finish at, at sixth grade, maybe they didn't even get the opportunity to go to, um, a formal education, receive a formal education. And what was happening, and what is happening is the students come in, for example, in high school, they enroll in the ninth grade, and then they're expected to graduate with their class. So when they don't get to graduate with the class, our scores are looked a little bit...
Right, right.
They affect our graduating scores because of that.
Yeah.
So it has not been a fair, you know, they just came in, so they shouldn't be measured against somebody that has been here all their life and attending schools all their life.
Sure, thank you. And this is, I mean, we're getting some new refugees in, uh, right now from Afghanistan, I understand?
Correct, there, there already were scheduled somewhere around 250 or so over the next two years immigrants as a part of the refugee resettlement program, and then in addition to that, of course, with, um, what took place in Afghanistan, there are folks being settled. Um, currently, 50-something individuals have been settled into the community and more are expected. So yes, that, that will continue to be, um, forefront in what the school is, is addressing or trying to address.
Yeah, so it's, it's really important for the school board to maintain contact with refugee resettlement program and those kinds of things, to make sure we, we, uh, know as soon as possible who's coming or who just arrived, so we can sort of gear, gear things toward, uh, what the need may be.
Yeah.
With those different, uh, as you said, Ms. Sanchez, it really can come from anywhere, anywhere all over the world, so...
And sometimes education is not a priority in their country, so...
Right, some of them it's not, yes.
Or, or because of war, they were not able to attend a school, so...
Right, right.
And you all already know, our CPS is in a great position to handle those kids. We speak a lot of languages, we're ready for them. And we don't care ultimately, I mean, you know, if we take a hit on the staff, so what, as long as we get the kids educated? But we, it shouldn't be held against us for things that are the result of funding.
Yes, right. Well, the only other thing I would suggest is, uh, kind of go through this list, and as the attorney on the board, you may be able to help, it, just in terms of if there's any specific language for a particular code, section of the Code of Virginia, or any specific dollar amounts...
Okay.
...that we want to, uh, to attach here to say what kind of funding, I mean, I think some of it is, uh...
I was using my microphone, sir, and I apologize.
Some of it is, uh, pretty open-ended, but there may be opportunities to, to be more specific with some of the, uh, some of the ideas that y'all have there. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, sir, and I will take that to the committee, and we'll make sure that that's, that's brought up to speed.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, you?
Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. Uh, Mr. Kathy, uh, just a kind of a side question that may have some legislative implications. I know that, um, this past year was challenging in just about every way for our students. And I know there have been concerns about students missing school or becoming disconnected with school, and that's been reflected in increased, um, occurrences of truancy. Our, so the truancy docket has, I, I don't know how it compares to previous years. I'm wondering, and again, I don't know whether this is a legislative matter or an RCPS matter, do we have the, um, authority to create diversionary opportunities or programs that, if a student goes to truancy court rather than them being suspended or sent home from school, which is not particularly helpful, um, are there diversionary programs that they, that will allow them opportunities to, um, perhaps address the concerns that they're facing, but also empower them as students to continue their education?
I have, sitting next to me, a gentleman who handled all of our truancy docket for many, many years, and is much better qualified, uh, than me to answer, and I'm going to ask him to help me with that one.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm working with the court's, uh, students, if they're missing school, uh, typically, and I can't remember any time that the punishment chosen was, you're suspended from school. The idea is to get kids back in school. Now, where we do have tools is if there are services needed, we can amend the application or the petition that was filed in the court for what's called a child in need of services. And that opens up a wealth of services that can be provided to the child, be it for mental health issues or oftentimes it's mental health issue. Very rarely is the issue simply a lazy kid that doesn't want to go to school. That is the minority of cases that we witness over in truancy court.
Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, if it's a question of increased funding, you mentioned mental health services, and we've seen reductions in that statewide. So I guess I'm asking whether it's a policy matter or a priority matter, is there, I want to make sure we're supporting, to the full extent that we can, our Roanoke City Public Schools to make sure that our children and youth have access to the services they need to be successful, and that in the long term, we're seeing a reduction in our truancy cases.
Yes, sir, and we share those goals. We, I had many conversations with Judge Ware when he was in the J and D Court, and he and I used to talk about his truancy docket in different ways, that it could be more helpful to the children and less punitive, you know, because it's where the, it's where the law intersects with the school system, and we want to keep it on the school system, more on the school system side and less on the law side.
Right.
And certainly, that's a priority for us. I'm sure there are funding options and, you know, mental health funding that would be very helpful to us, and maybe we can articulate that a little better in this policy, but we'll certainly look into that because it's important to us. I would imagine that the truancy docket was very relaxed during the pandemic, and that's something that's going to have to be worked out, you know, in each individual school, and we're going to have to figure out, because a lot of these situations aren't probably aren't truancy, as your, our city attorney has told us.
Thank you.
And real quickly, Mr. Cobb, we happen to have on council one of our stars over in truancy court who works the front lines of these issues. So if Ms. Sanchez Jones would like to add anything.
By the time we take a student to court and a family, it has taken, we had spent a lot of time meeting with those families, trying to find out what their needs are. And when things don't change, that's a last resort, is to take them to court. But a lot of time gets spent on home visits, phone calls, checking on them, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. In some cases, we had had some success, and other cases, there's something else that that needs to be addressed through, and through the court, it gets addressed. But if we, if we wouldn't go to court, those issues would not come out in court, you know, like the need for supervision and other issues that could come up. But that is, it's not a punitive, but a way to find a solution for the student and their family that is done.
Thank you. I, my hope is always that there's possibility for for it to be restorative rather than punitive.
100%, absolutely.
And yes, funding is needed to get, to hire more student support specialists, because right now, the way it is, one student support specialist may have five schools or C schools, depending elementary and middle schools. At the high school level, it's Fleming, they have three student support specialists plus myself dealing with EL students. Patrick Henry has two student support specialists, and so, and so, there needs to be more throughout the elementary, because elementary is when we need to start paying attention to those kids staying home, because a lot of them are latchkey kids, so they're staying home, and so that's, that's where we need.
Well, thank you. That really helps clarify the process and, I guess, the direct ask. And if it's a direct ask that we need to make of the General Assembly, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If you can take that back to the superintendent and the board to see if there's something else. But you know, the other thing that that conversation brings to mind is this article that was in the paper, I guess, was Sunday, about the special education placements for schools like Minnick, where there's funding available to place students there, but that same funding is not available to the public school system to provide services that might prevent the need for that placement in a special ed school. So I guess I was wondering, when I read that, is anybody, to your knowledge, at the state level, like the School Boards Association or whatever, is anybody really looking at that, not just in terms of Roanoke, but just statewide, that some of that funding could be made available?
I have served on the VSBA Legislative Committee several terms, and yes, there is always a concern in general with funds like that being directed to private corporations and not to the public schools. And in that, in that particular instance, I have seen that, that is on the list of legislative priorities for VSBA. Yeah, you know, and that particular article, I thought, ended up with the child coming to PH, which is good news.
Yes.
Good news for the child.
Yeah.
And we, and that's what we think, but yeah, absolutely, and that's, there's always that tension between the private providers and the, and the public schools.
Well, can you have sent to all of us the legislative program for the School Boards Association?
Yes, sir. It's like a phone book, but I will make sure you have it.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is we, VML is, you know, it's a pretty big document, too. So that's what I'm thinking, is we can just add that, is that we, in addition to VML, that we support the program of the VSBA, so.
I will make sure you all have it, sir.
All right. You'll send it to us electronically, I hope.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anything else on education before we move on, folks? Great, thank you all very much. Very good discussion. Looking at our current or previous legislative priorities, the first one has to do with establishing real estate lien status and priority for unpaid local solid waste collection fees. This one has been around for a while. I guess this year, they've had a, or they're still having, a working group for developing an annual fee schedule for non-hazardous solid waste management facilities. And, and I know that our treasurer, Evelyn Powers, has attended at least one of the meetings of this working group. I left a message for her last week with the information that I had up to that point, but she hasn't been able to get back to me yet, and I wasn't sure if she could be with us this morning or not. Mr. Pretty in Senator Edwards' office informed me that the senator was not inclined to introduce legislation on this, so I don't know if, again, I know the treasurer has also been working with other treasurers around the Commonwealth to see if they can get some support for this. But one of the things that has occurred to me, thinking about this, that it seems like the opposition to another lien has come from the conservative side of the General Assembly, and perhaps a good explanation for them is that if we can collect the taxes and fees that are currently due or past due, then that reduces the pressure to raise the fees or tax rates on everybody else. So, you know, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to raise fees if we don't have to, but if we can't collect them, then there's a pressure for it to go up. So I have talked to Delegate Rasul after, after numerous attempts to schedule and reschedule just a phone conference with him. He finally did call me yesterday, and so he's going to take a look at this and see if he'd be willing to introduce it, and I'll get back to him after this meeting. But it just, it just, I think for all of us, it just really hasn't made sense to say, well, if it's this fee and that tax and whatever else, you can get a lien, but if it's the solid waste collection fee, you can't add that to the lien on someone's property. So any, any concerns or questions about that one?
I have a question.
Yes, Jeffrey.
Are we getting support of this at all to move forward on this? Are you saying Delegate Rasul is willing to look at it?
Well, after my conversation yesterday, he said he would take another look at it. I told him I would follow up with him after this meeting and let him know where things stood, and so he'll get, he'll get back to us on that.
So we're going to keep this in there?
Unless someone feels otherwise. I mean, I just think it's, to me, it's just basic logic. You know, it's on the real estate tax bill. Part of what's on that bill, you can get a lien, part of it you can't. That just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay.
So we're okay with that? The only thing I would note, if you're following along on the, the material that I sent out ahead of time, everything under C, which is language, and I want Mr. Spencer to please give Mr. Collins our appreciation again for helping with the treasurer, working with the treasurer to come up with this language, but that all should be in italics. Those two paragraphs that start with C, in the event that charges are not paid, and then going down to duly adopted resolution or ordinance, that should have been in italics, and I apologize for that. The second item is the legislation to enable localities to establish a ticket diversion program to allow bicyclists who are cited for traffic violations to receive safety training in lieu of paying a fine. Again, Senator Edwards was not inclined to support that or introduce anything, and Mr. Cal had actually indicated that this is not really a major issue. We don't have a lot of citations for bicyclists, so we may just want to consider dropping this. Did you want to make any other comment?
No, I was just going to point out, it may not be worth the trouble. We just don't have that many citations, and, you know, if that ever were to increase, we might look at it differently, but at this point, not necessarily a priority.
So does anybody have any concerns about just dropping that one, number two?
Let me just ask a question, Mr. Cal. Remember when we did the campaign, we had signs up along, what, they just disappeared? What happened with that? The do's and don'ts was helpful?
Yeah, they were, all of those campaigns are designed to be just kind of intermittent because.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, they become sort of background noise. It doesn't mean there won't be a similar campaign as we move forward, because at that time, and what you're referring to are the signs that we had about use of the greenways and those types of things, really because we had saw the increase in use with the onset of COVID.
COVID, right.
And so we start seeing again issues like that. We may very well undertake another campaign.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that being.
Okay. So hearing no objection, we're going to go ahead and strike that one from the list I let Mr. Cal know that sent on number three, requiring retrofitting some buildings containing one or more dwelling units to install and maintain smoke alarms. Senator Edwards may be interested in this one and has asked for some specific language to be drafted, so we have staff working on that.
We do, and we will provide that language, because we do still believe this is a priority, that if we can have someone that actually would carry it, it would be worth, worth continuing to pursue.
Right, so we'll look for someplace specific in the code where we can insert that amendment, and then the same with the next one about no smoking areas in outdoor parks within 100 feet of rec centers, outdoor playgrounds and sports fields. You know, I still am of the opinion that we could be more successful with this if we word this in terms of establishing, limiting smoking to designated areas, rather than to say no smoking, limit smoking to designated areas at least 100 feet away or wherever we wanted to do it.
Yeah, I think it's comparable to where we ended up really with the, with the amphitheater.
Right.
It seemed that the, you know, the General Assembly was more inclined to designate smoking areas than it was to identify non-smoking areas.
Non-smoking areas, so.
So it may be that more appropriate to try to word language in that, in that fashion.
And again, you have staff working on that.
Correct.
The next one has to do with the parole statutes. Senator Edwards is waiting for a report from the Crime Commission, which they do not expect until much closer to the legislative session. So I suggest that we just sort of put that one on hold for right now and, and see what happens between now and, and the end of this year.
What, are you referring to number five?
I'm sorry.
Number five, is that the one?
Yeah, number five, yeah. Yeah, that's been, that's been a focus for Senator Edwards over the last few years, and so, you know, he's, he's sort of carried the ball in the General Assembly on that issue, and the Crime Commission was looking into it this year. And Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments to make on that, I think we just got to wait to see what he's, he's interested in doing.
He is, I think he's going to aggressively move toward taking issue with parole based on a report that the General Assembly received from Washington Law School, they did a study there, and talked about parole and some things that could be, actions that could be taken to improve it. And one of them really was to increase the parole board in terms of having more people work on things, but there is a study out, and the senator advised me that he's going to aggressively move this fault when the General Assembly reconvened.
Right.
To take some action on it.
Well, obviously, you're in a good position to stay in contact with him on this particular issue and keep us advised if there's anything that we should, should look at in terms of our legislative program.
Yes, sir. As of today, it affects me, as of right now, on the parole board.
Right.
It's become a political issue, but yeah, we'll follow that.
Okay, great, thank you. So we had a few additional things that have popped up here in the last week or two. Mr. Former council member Beth Fitzpatrick contacted me regarding legislation to make the Virginia Museum of Transportation a state agency. And Mr. Pretty advised me that Senator Edwards is going to introduce that legislation. So I think we can just put that in and say that we support legislation to be introduced by Senator Edwards for that purpose. I just thought that I would share, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read you the whole email that, that Mr. Fitzpatrick sent me, it's quite lengthy, but I thought there were a few things that, especially as we have some, some folks that haven't been on council too long to kind of get some of the background on this. The biggest issue in front of the Transportation Museum right now really is the fact that Norfolk Southern is no longer cooperating with these 611 excursions that they had for a few years, and that was a huge source of revenue for them. So without that revenue, it's been very difficult for them. But the, the Transportation Museum was started in 1962 as the Roanoke Transportation Museum. It was actually owned and operated by the city. And I think some of us may not have remembered that, the city decided to close the museum and actually also the zoo due to costs in 1976, and the museum organized a 501(c)(3) charitable corporation that has run the museum ever since then. The General Assembly did name the Virginia, the, yeah, Virginia Museum of Transportation as the official transportation museum of Virginia in 1986, and at that time, they were providing about $750,000 a year in funding. But at some point, the Attorney General under Governor Gilmore made a ruling that no non-state agencies could receive any state funding. So since, since 98, the museum has had to rely on self-funding and no state funding that had allowed them to grow tremendously in the past. So in 2012, when the museum was 50 years old, the city donated the equipment that we had owned since 1962, because when the museum was established by the city in 62, Norfolk Southern donated a lot of the equipment that's there to the city. And even though when they set up the private corporation, private 501(c)(3) to maintain the museum, the city still retained ownership of those assets until 2012. And there was a challenge from Norfolk Southern to, they raised a million dollars, city put in a million dollars, and then Norfolk Southern would put in a million dollars, a total of $3 million. At that time, as a city, we were only able to commit to $500,000. So some of that money from Norfolk Southern did not materialize. And the last thing that I think is of significance is that 40% of the visitors to the Virginia Museum of Transportation are from out of town. That's higher than the percentage of any of our other museums or institutions like that. So that means that these people are eating in our restaurants, staying in our hotels, maybe doing some shopping otherwise, so it certainly has a benefit to our economy. So I hope everyone will agree that we should support. So, I hope everyone will agree that we should support legislation by Senator Edwards to make that a state agency and put it on a firmer financial setting. Mr. Jeffrey?
I just want to make sure it's clear. So, getting this official state agency designation allows them to get state funding?
Correct, yes, that would be the whole purpose behind it. And I'm sure, you know, they'll continue to do private fundraising and so forth as well. But it would allow them to receive the state funding that the Attorney General ruling said they can't get at this point.
Okay.
Okay? So, Mr. Cobb has sent some information regarding the AED. Pushing, I'll ask you if you want to say a few words about that?
Sure, thank you. So, AED is Automated External Defibrillator. These are devices that we're seeing more readily available in a lot of schools, healthcare facilities, and the provision is to significantly reduce cardiac arrest with a quicker response time. So, what I sent to you was follow-up information when I brought this up at our last meeting. And this additional information includes some letters of support from local auto dealer who believes this is a, who's on the Board of Directors for the Virginia Automobile Dealers Association and supports this concept, as well as local and regional residents who have been saved by virtue of the use of AEDs. To just recap the ask, this would be a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for AED purchases for citizens. The central focus would be including participating dealerships that offer new and used vehicle purchasers the opportunity to buy an AED for their car, and that is fully reimbursed on the following year's tax return. AEDs would also be available through other retail options, such as the Compress and Shock website, and the foundation makes its home here in Roanoke. And so, this is a local organization that we can support through this legislation. The tax credit would be capped at a certain amount, and all AED sales will be tracked to ensure the cap is not exceeded. The only two interventions that will change outcomes in out-of-hospital cardiac arrest are bystander CPR and early use of an AED. If an AED is used within three minutes of out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, survival can be as high as 70%. There is a model for this in Seattle that could be very easily adapted and brought to the Commonwealth of Virginia to make these readily available, but this is the first step to ask the legislature, the General Assembly, to support this. This is also an action item that extends the Gwyneth's Law, which made CPR training mandatory for all teachers and as a high school graduation requirement that was enacted in Virginia in 2013. So, I'm not going to read through all the letters. I just simply wanted to bring this and encourage us to to support the introduction of this legislation. I don't know about where Delegate Rasul and Senator Edwards are on this, but I know that Delegate Chris Hurst, who's in the 12th District, is very supportive of this. And I think that the important thing right now is to get this in front of the legislature as a priority in terms of saving lives. And this is a very tangible way in which to do that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cobb. And let me ask you one question of what you just said before I opened it up. And that is, do you know whether Delegate Hurst actually intends to introduce legislation of this, or has he?
I have not confirmed that. I know he's supportive of it.
Can you check on that and see?
Sure.
And the reason I say that is because if he is going to introduce legislation, then obviously, he's working with legislative services to come up with specific language.
Right.
If not, then we may want to ask Dr. Perkins if he can work with someone who will, whether it's an amendment to this Gwyneth's Law or wherever in the Code of Virginia, to come up with some specific language to accomplish this.
I'd be glad to follow up on that.
But again, the best thing for all of us is if Delegate Hurst has already decided he's going to introduce something, then he can let Slave Services do that. He won't have to do it, so if you could let us know on that. Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Yeah, I agree, because the verbiage might help some because I was hearing tax credits. So, I'm trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish with the bill. Is it for the tax credit or for funding, or?
No, it's just for tax credit.
Just for tax credit, okay.
So, if you buy a car and you pay the extra amount
Okay.
to get the AED, it's, you know, carried around in your trunk or whatever, then you get a form.
Okay, I heard that, I heard tax credit.
You can put that on your tax bill next time.
That's why.
I just wanted to make sure it's all right.
State income tax. You get, so each buyer would get that.
We get that credit.
Each individual person, get reimbursed basically by having a tax credit.
Okay, that kind of got lost there for a minute.
Okay. No worries. Okay, any other comments or are you okay with that? Get Mr. Cobb to follow up a little bit and get back to us on where that stands with Delegate Hurst. So, in my conversation with Delegate Rasul yesterday with two other items that he mentioned, and Mr. Cal has also been involved with this, so I'll sort of introduce him and then allow him to elaborate on each one. The first one has to do with the ask of, he's suggesting $10 million from the billion dollars that the state still has from the ARPA funds for capital investment to support spinoffs from Ramp and from the Frayland Biomedical Research Institute at VTC in the Innovation Corridor here in Roanoke. This also relates to a study that he tells me Go Virginia is just completing at this point for our region. So, what this means basically is either refurbishing a building or perhaps constructing new buildings where these spinoffs can go. And I'll just kick it to you, but it's very interesting. This past Wednesday at Kiwanis, Dr. Friedlander was our speaker, and he talked about a number of things that were really amazing to me, including the fact that, you know, when the Army built a new Walter Reed Hospital Complex outside of DC, actually out in Maryland, the old complex has been turned into a research center. And they were looking for somebody to do, to take one floor, one entire floor of one of the buildings to do research on children's cancer. And of course, Johns Hopkins and another, a number of others were really interested in doing this. Well, guess who got it? Frayland Biomedical Research Institute. So, they now have, up in Washington, an entire floor of one of the buildings dedicated to research on childhood cancers. I guess that, you know, that really puts us on the map again in a very significant way. And the other thing he talked about that really sort of stuck with me was this idea of getting certain cells or enzymes or whatever they are out of unpasteurized milk. And then again, that ended up in the newspaper a few days later. They're getting the milk from Homestead Creamery. So, I think that the reputation that the research institute and the medical school have already made for themselves, we can leverage to request this kind of funding to say, okay, these people are spinning off things that could be commercialized. We want to keep that in Roanoke, or at least in the Roanoke Valley to the extent that we can and not have those operations and those jobs shipped off somewhere else. So, Mr. Cal, did you want to?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is, obviously, as the research institute becomes more successful, as was just mentioned, and a number of those entities that are startup have moved actually through Ramp. If you look at the cohorts that have come out of Ramp, especially the last few, have, many of those have come out of either the medical school, the hospital, or the research institute. It became evident that what is still missing as a part of that sort of full ecosystem, if you will, is some kind of shared lab space, especially what they refer to as wet labs associated with that. And so, and that was part of what the Go Virginia efforts have been, is to try to identify that even further in what's possible. So, when the General Assembly met in special session to discuss the use of the rescue, some of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, there was a group represented by us as well as Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech Foundation, and Carillion, and our legislative representatives. And each of those basically made a pitch for some of the funding out of that special session. And it didn't take long to realize, if anybody paid attention to the news, that those decisions had long been made as to how those dollars were going to be allocated. And so, we were unsuccessful in that regard. However, the General Assembly did hold back about $1 billion of their Rescue Act funding to be decided in this upcoming session. And of course, they also have a sizable, I'll say the budget is very healthy at the state level, including some sizable surpluses. So, certainly in our conversations with Delegate Rasul and others, felt it worth making yet another pitch for this much needed. And it would allow substantial expansion of the activities, particularly the job-creating activities that will occur in the Innovation Corridor. So, that's some of the information behind it.
And so, I guess our economic development folks have been involved in that process as well.
Correct, and they've met twice, I think, with Delegate Rasul. And I know that some of the folks with Carillion in particular have also talked with some of the, some of the General Assembly about the possibilities associated with it as well.
So, again, if you can work with them, help us come up with some language, draft some language as to how we're going to put this in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions on that? I mean, I think, I think all of us have realized, going back, going back almost 20 years now, that this has really been the future of Roanoke. The idea of establishing that Riverside Complex and really changing it, it really is transformational for us as a community. So, I think we want to continue to get as much support as we can to, for that, for that whole thing. And then, the second one is very, very appealing to me at least, that is, Delegate Rasul is suggesting the reimagining, as he calls it, of the Katava Hospital property. He thinks that we should begin with at least a study or analysis of refurbishing the old buildings and constructing new facilities to provide more mental health beds, especially with a focus on substance abuse treatment. And I think the work that our collective has been doing in this community over the last few years now, we can really make a strong case for why it would be so important to have that kind of treatment facility, increased number of beds available, especially to have it so close by. Because even though in the initial weeks of treatment, these programs often don't want outside visitors, at some point, they do. And if family and friends have to travel halfway across the state to go and visit somebody or work with the treatment team to say, okay, this is where we need to help make sure this is successful, you know, that's a challenge. But if all you have to do is drive over the mountain and go into Katava, people from Roanoke Valley would be able to be part of that that treatment process and developing that support network as folks come out of substance abuse treatment. Because that's one of the most important things. Do you have a good support network in your friends and families once you complete the act of treatment? So, he's suggesting that ultimately, this could be about a $200 million project.
Yeah, and I think this came up, Delegate Rasul brought this up also at a recent meeting that involved the Attorney General here in the community talking. In that case, the meeting was actually about gun violence, but included a discussion regarding mental health services as well as substance use treatment and recovery. And so, and it's obviously no secret to anyone of the struggles that all of the mental health institutions have had across the state up to the point now in which there are not, they're not taking admissions except under very, very rare circumstances. And so, there clearly is a need to address all of those facilities. Obviously, Katava is the closest here. I think there is also the recognition that with the increase in substance use and the need for recovery programs alongside the residential recovery programs that are operating and hopefully expanding in our community as well, is the need to look at this facility. So, I know in at least in the brief presentation that Delegate Rasul gave at that meeting with the Attorney General, it really is, and Councilmember Vespij mentioned this, it really is a reimagining of Katava so that it is much more than what it currently is able to offer and to do so in a much more modern fashion. So, I think my sense is from that presentation, this is a conversation that the delegate has just kind of begun to move forward within the General Assembly, but certainly an important issue for our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Delegate Rasul's recommendations or suggestions are, he's not asking the local government to?
No, 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 no. He's asking that we endorse the use of about $200 million ultimately of the billion dollars in ARPA funding that the state retained for this project, that they identify that. You know, this is, this is again, to my mind, one of the things that, at the state and the local level, this money should really be concentrated on one-time investments. And this would be a huge investment to deal with the situation that we all know has become worse and worse over the years in terms of addiction and, you know, the suicides that happen, the overdoses that happen, accidental deaths from overdose and all that sort of thing. So, he's asking us if we will just endorse his request to use the state funds to do this. I mean, it's a state, it's a state hospital, so money will come from them. Any other questions or comments? Everybody okay with putting that in? And again, I'll ask Mr. Cal if he can have staff as well, well, coordinate with Delegate Rasul's staff because they're going to come up with the language and, you know, the wording on that. Actually, on both of those, I guess we want to coordinate with his office to come up with specific language that we can put in here that will be helpful to him. You know, we always ask the legislators to help us with different things. I think it's good for us, once in a while, to put something in there and say, we can help them promote part of their agenda. Anything further? Mr. Cobb?
Just a couple of things that we may or may not want to consider. Bob, I was reading in your weekly update the situation around all the work that the homeless assistance team is doing in terms of working to house persons who are currently homeless. And one of the bits of information you shared was really compelling to me in terms of how much of this, in terms of affordable housing. You talked about the lack of available affordable housing, and we've also talked about the lack of safe affordable housing in the city. And that people who have connected with housing, you know, maybe only 20% of them have been able to locate viable housing. I asked this question, do we need to give attention to anything legislatively to change the scenarios around affordable housing and the maintaining of affordable housing in our city?
Probably, you know, we'll sound like a broken record here, I guess, based on the previous two comments, because the thing that would probably help the most is actually money. I mean, it really is financial. You know, recently, the, you know, the President announced that they were going to pursue, you know, the delivery of 100,000 affordable housing units within a specified period of time. And of course, that's, I don't know what they, they think that's maybe a percent of what's necessary across the country. And the issue, as was indicated in the update, is not necessarily securing the vouchers and not necessarily getting folks that are interested and in need of securing that housing. It's actually finding the housing. And so, it's really probably the need to be able to seek additional funding to provide both, in both cases, these are supportive housing. So, they're accompanied by the services that are necessary to address the other issues that someone that's experiencing homelessness might need to be addressed. But really, transitional housing as well as permanent housing, both, again, supported. That's the homeless population. Alongside that, you just have a broader sort of challenge in ensuring that there is safe, affordable housing across the entire community. But really, the piece that's tied with that aspect with the transitional and the permanent supportive really is predominantly a money issue. It's really getting more dollars available so that more private development actually can take on that role and be able to deliver those housing units. They just don't, they just don't exist in enough, in enough numbers as we go forward. I don't think there's really anything from a code standpoint or legislative standpoint. I don't think there's really anything from a code standpoint or legislature that stands in the way, it's just an inadequacy of the availability of that housing.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that one? We, I think you have one more you want to...
Yeah.
I, I guess it would be good for us to know if anybody at the Virginia Department of Housing, Community Development, or wherever, is, is coming up with any proposal related to the ARPA funds.
Right.
So maybe we can see if we can find out if they're working on something.
Yeah, we can certainly find that out. You know, there, there were some funds that were identified for that purpose at the federal level, but I don't know if they've developed far enough yet as to what they're going to do with it. But we can certainly find out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The last thing is, many of you know that we just had our first ever Groceries Not Guns, Gun Buyback event. 91 guns were turned in or purchased, including semi-automatic handguns and other guns, revolvers and rifles. There were two, two things that emerged, and in talking with Delegate Rasool, I believe he would be able to help us craft language as well as offer support for this. One is the ability to increase anonymity as part of the gun buyback process. And the second would be expanding the exchange opportunities. It already includes gift cards, but to expand those opportunities to meet specific situations. So it might include cash, it might include other options. But I, with your permission or support, I'd like to work with Delegate Rasool to craft some language around that, that could help support and build on the success of this, this, and other events like this for our city.
That's great. Everybody okay with that one?
Yeah, as far as I can understand, he's, Delegate Rasool wants to craft some language to...
I'll work with him to do that. He's supportive of increasing anonymity and expanding the exchange opportunities. So it's just a matter of crafting language that would allow us to do that.
So as things stand now, we cannot offer cash, only gift cards?
Right.
And we can't, we can't do it anonymously.
Yeah, there's no mechanism to do it anonymously.
We have to reveal the name of anybody. And obviously there are people who might not want folks to know.
Well, yeah, and that might help reach some of the demographics that we are trying to reach that we did not.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Right. That's the intent.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment to our school board representative over here on this. And I want to thank Portman McCaffrey for your work, and please share my support for, to the school board for what you all have done with probably the biggest issue facing us in the country right now is COVID. And I look around the country and see what's happening with school boards, meetings, and it's getting very, not getting there, it's, it's something that's really out of control. But you all have done a masterful job in handling that, I feel, for our area. And I just want to commend you all for that. It's a tough issue, but I think you've done a great job, you all have done a great job on that. And please continue that, not only in terms of the mask and the things that have been mandated, but also even in your athletic areas in terms of schools and games and those things. At least you are involved with that and monitoring that, and I think that's so important. As you see, a lot of communities and schools are pausing because of that. But I'm just concerned about that. That's really dominating my, my thoughts regarding where we're going and what's happening, because the numbers continue to rise. And I'm just afraid we may possibly get back to the steps, things we were doing last year. But I want to thank you all for standing up and doing what you've done so far with that. And please, if there's anything we can do or encourage you or help you, let us, let us know, but thank you for your work you've done on that.
Mayor Lee, we appreciate that very much, and thank you. And I, I'll tell you, and anybody on the board would tell you, it's, we have a very even-headed and wise population in this city who don't, are not affected by a lot of this angst that is in other places. And I, and I'll tell you, it's, it's a reflection on our community, that we've got a quality community with people who recognize the risk and are treating it the way it ought to be treated. And that's why I think, that's why things are going as well as they are for us, has nothing to do with us, has to do with our people who are level-headed, who see a risk, who understand that a mask is no big deal, who are getting vaccinated when they can. And it, and that's, you know, and it's, it's always on a knife's edge, but I tell you, I've never been so proud to be a resident of Roanoke City since I've seen the way we have handled this crisis as opposed to a lot of maybe our surrounding jurisdictions.
Right.
And it's a tribute to the quality of our citizens, and, and that has little to do with the school board.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you for, for raising that, Mr. Mayor. And let me just say ditto, and I, I think that, you know, COVID measures are very important. There's also a couple of other issues that have been tearing up a lot of communities and a lot of school boards, having to do with things like critical race theory and things like how we deal with transgendered students and that sort of thing. I tell you, every time I read one of those articles about something that's going on somewhere else around the country, I'm just so proud of our school board and our superintendent for the way that you all are dealing with these situations. I really want you to take that back to them if you would. And, and, you know, we're, we're sort of in the minority these days as a locality where the governing body continues to appoint the school board. So I, I hope that all of my colleagues here, I don't put you on the spot, but I hope that we can assure the school board that we got your backs on some of this stuff, because we have a great community, you're right. And, and the vast majority of our citizens understand these things and, and they're supportive as well. And there's always the possibility that there's going to be a few who want to come in and start some controversy. And I think that the school board should be assured that you have our support on these things. Appreciate what you do.
And it is much appreciated, and we know it, and we thank you for it.
Great.
And, and I would also add, Mr. Bestbitch, that the community reaction to those issues you mentioned is of a piece with the pandemic.
Right.
You've got a good population that understands what's real and what's not, and reacts accordingly.
Well, you know, unfortunately, sometimes some of the news coverage seems to want to identify one or two people out here and act like, well, half the people are on this side and half the people are on that side. And we need to make sure that we try to, to be clear about where we are, where our community as a whole is, and where you are as a school board. So to wrap things up, if I could, let me just suggest that all of the things that we've talked about, in terms of input from staff, in terms of input from some of our legislators, from the school board, let's try to get all of that wrapped up by the end of October. And get, so I can get that out to everybody as a final draft, and then schedule our next legislative meeting as part of our meetings on November 15, which would be the second meeting. Because if we do it at the end of October, November 1 is the council date, I don't want to give people 24 hours to look it over. So we have a couple of weeks, we get it by the end of October, we'll have a couple of weeks for everybody to look it over, and we can hopefully finalize on November 15, build that into the agenda for that afternoon. And let me ask this question. Would anyone have a problem about if we, if we scheduled that meeting? Let me say, depending on what the agenda turns out to look like, if, if it looks like we're going to have a heavy agenda for the 2 o'clock session, would we be able to come at 1 o'clock that day and have the legislative committee at 1:00 and then go into the regular council meeting at 2:00? Would that...
Do we have a GRTC? I don't know when GRTC next meets.
GRTC is that day? Okay, so that's not going to work. Okay, well, I'm glad I asked. So we'll try to build that into this, to the agenda, to have a break at some point in the 2 o'clock session and go into the legislative committee, finalize that. And that, then we can make our usual arrangements to have legislators come to a meeting in December.
We can, we can try to work that.
That, that makes sense to people.
Yeah.
All right, so give us a little time to work on all these things and sort of, you know, fine-tune what we need to at this point, and then give people a couple of weeks to look at it.
Mr. Chair, would you add the items that you, that were listed, the last couple of items that you talked about or mentioned? They were not on our list. If you could add those in.
I, I will revise that and send it out to everybody later this week. Yes, that's, that's absolutely a great suggestion, because you're right, that wasn't there. And I'm going to, I'm going to revise some of this anyway, some of the language that the, our, Advenus, our legislative liaison said suggested, because I, you know, I don't think we need to have that in there at this point, but it was just helpful for us to have that for reference as we were continuing the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just share with the board, and I mentioned a little bit to you, that I had a meeting with Congressman Klein last Friday, and we talked about some issues. And basically, our focus was on communication, because there are some things with the federal government that can, that we need in, in our city. And he represents us, and our discussion mostly centered around infrastructure and where that bill is coming and how that can help us, and we need his support. And so we know there may be some differences we have, but we also have some things in common. And we want to discuss that, and I would like to get with you at some point and talk to you about how we could meet with him if, as a council or some of us, could talk to him about the issues that we have. And he's amenable to doing that. And I think we haven't been as, we haven't communicated as much lately, especially since Congressman Goodlatte left. So I wanted to, to bring that to the forefront, because I think he can help us, or at least it helps us to put those things on the table, that federal government can help, and that we need them to hopefully pass that affect us down the line. So, and I get with Ms. Cal, and other than maybe we can, if we can't meet as a group, several of us can meet with him. He's willing to do that.
Yeah.
He wants to do that and talk about those issues, because we're, we're the biggest, probably the biggest urban, urban city that he has.
Oh, sure.
So, and we talked about urban issue versus rural, and but he's very amenable to doing that and would like to do that, so I want to let you know, and, and so that we can talk or sort of a time where we could, again, get together. And I got a list from city manager about issues that, that the federal government can help us with, and so, but I appreciate the meeting with him, and, and he wants to do more, so we can do that.
So let me make sure I understand, are you suggesting that, first of all, you and I put our heads together and try to come up something, and then we try to schedule something with, with him and the...
Yeah, you and I and, and the city manager.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk about some issues that we can, and then connect with him and, and do that. I remember, and you probably remember this too, when we did have a meeting with a former congressman.
For sure.
And I think he came, if I'm not mistaken, I think he came for council at some point, and we talked, I don't know about how we can do that now, but I would like to see, you know, him, just talk to us about some things that, that will be beneficial to us in the federal, federal government. And the thing I like about it, he's amenable to doing that.
Yeah.
So let's communicate, let's talk, and he wants to do that, so I just want maybe us to talk this up a time or some issues.
Yeah, if you and, and Mr. Cal and I can set up something either later this week or sometime next week, that would be best for my schedule over the next couple of weeks. If we can do that and then, and then decide where we're going to go for there, that would be great. That, that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
I'm pretty available at this point, up to the next couple of weeks, and then...
Okay. Well, I thought we had a good thing, I want to keep it going and keep the communication going.
Yes, absolutely. Great, great idea.
All right, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All right. Nothing further?
Yes, wait.
I'm sorry.
Are you planning to do your legislators invite to come to council at this time?
Uh...
We need to get those letters out soon.
Well, let's see, what are, I, I guess probably the first meeting in December makes more sense than waiting till so close to the sessions. Is that, what's that first Monday in December? Anybody got that handy?
For the first...
First Monday in December?
6th.
It's the 6th. So we'll have our legislative committee on November 15, and then December 6 invite our delegation. And, and I guess I like, you know, we, we've invited legislators that specifically represent the city of Roanoke, or part of the city of Roanoke at least. And then we've also invited some other legislators nearby. And to be very candid with you, I'm not sure that that's really helped us all that much.
It has not. I just said to the mayor, I don't, I don't know that that's helpful.
So if, I, I think we really want to focus on getting Senator Edwards, Delegate Rasool, and Delegate Head, who still has part of the city, and, and then we'll ask the three of them to come and, and just let it go with that. Is that amenable to everybody?
I agree.
All right, so if we could just invite those three to come on December 6, Ms. Cook?
Well, I don't know, I could try and maybe, I just said...
Well, let's, let's decide on that, if that, if that, we'll, we'll have this discussion and then decide if that makes sense. Thank you. That, that may need to be part of a different process.
9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
What, what time? You want to say 10 o'clock on the 6th for part of our morning, ask them to come at 10:00 in the morning?
Yeah, whatever is convenient for the, the legislators.
Yeah.
If they're scheduled, we can work that out when they're scheduled, that's fine.
10?
Because we're going to be here.
Yeah, maybe you can call their offices and see if, what would be good in terms of getting it scheduled, because we could do it at 10:00 or we could do it at 11:00 or, you know, we can be a little flexible on that, based on what's going to get, get them here. Okay?
Got you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cook, for taking care of that for us. All hearts and minds are clear, as my dear sister Anita Price would always say, our committee meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. And council will stand in recess as we go into our closed sessions, and we'll reconvene at 2:00 PM. Thank you.